Oh, thank you very much. Tonight, we will have some consent agenda items. We have discussion about long-term facilities maintenance. We've had a few conversations around policy. We have the formal action on for the upcoming school board election. Action on school, school board liaison roles that we talked about in work session. And then leadership committee updates. And we will also be introducing two of our new administrators.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. We do not have a formal excellence in action to present tonight. So I thought we could take a few minutes to introduce our two new members of our Edina Public Schools community that we have here with us tonight.
Absolutely. So I'd like to invite up Mr. Paul Patesel and then Ms. Frances Baycare, who goes by Franny. She does not want to be called Frances.
Welcome.
To the table up here.
We're so glad to have you.
Yeah. So really excited. I will, Franny started on August 1st. And so I will start with just a little bit about Franny and her overview. Franny has most recently served as principal of middle school. She also served at high school level as dean, assistant principal, and then has quite a substantial district level work where she worked at the secondary level. She also has personal background where she actually served or actually came in as a multilingual learner into the school system. And we know that her position is director of achievement equity and multilingual learner services. And so we're just really delighted to have somebody that has such a sound administrative background, who really truly understands the multilingual learner experience and has that expertise in leading for that because she served in a school that had just a strong percentage of multilingual learners. And so I'd like to welcome her to Edina Public Schools.
Thank you. And I'm very excited to be in Edina Schools and getting, getting my feet wet and learning about the new dual immersion program, which I am very excited to get to work with the team and getting to meet some of the multilingual teachers. So I'm excited to jump in and see what support I can help provide Edina on its journey.
Thank you, Director Baycare. And now we made an announcement last week and a lot of folks saw that. Welcome, Paul. It's great to have you onboard. You actually started on, well, Thursday was your first technical day, but you're, you're in the office on Friday. And Paul has a 37-year experience in education. He most recently served 15 years as a middle school principal in Wayzetta. We very quickly got him into Green and so we were really excited about that. And he worked on that with us, really understands high achieving environment. He actually served as assistant or associate principal at Wayzetta High School. You know, Wayzetta High School has nearly 4,000 students in it. And so he has a strong background in that area. In getting to know Paul, he talked a lot about relationship, relationship with all stakeholders, and that really excited me. He also understands just the level of rigor that we expect for achievement. And we're just really excited to have him in the district to serve as interim, given that he just retired in his, in his current role. So really happy that he was willing to join the Hornet family as well.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. It is truly an honor to be able to have this opportunity. As a lifelong resident of the Southwest Metro, I understand fully the expectations that Edina brings and the high standards of excellence that you've been able to accomplish over the many, many decades. And so we look forward to upholding that. I've been, as Dr. Stanley said, I've been in the office for a couple of days and getting to know the staff at Edina High School and am very, very impressed. And so I know that we have a lot of work to do, but we have the capacity to do that work. And so I'm excited about that and look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here tonight and introducing yourselves. We're just really thrilled to have you onboard. Thank you. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. I apologize. We normally have hearings for members of the public, but we do not have any members of the public here tonight. You're always welcome to come on our Monday regular meetings. And now we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from our consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. We will now vote by roll call to approve the consent agenda. Allenberg? Aye. Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gableer?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
The motion is approved. Our consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to our discussion items. Our first item is our long-term facility maintenance plan. And I'd like to invite up Director of Business Services, Merk Woodard.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. Good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Stanley. The long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2034 actually starts off our levy certification process for taxes payable in 2024, which will fund a portion of our operations for fiscal year 2025. So the, the state of Minnesota actually requires us to adopt an annual rolling 10-year plan in order to access the long-term facilities maintenance revenue. And so this action, not action, discussion item tonight introduces that, that planned action for next week's board meeting for formal approval. Once formal approval is received from the school board, we'll forward that on to the Department of Education, who will then load that information into the levy certification system. Just as a reminder, our district here utilizes a mixture of pay-as-you-go levy authority as well as bonded debt in order to finance long-term facilities maintenance projects throughout the district. Those projects include building envelope improvements, interior surfaces, mechanical system upgrades, plumbing, et cetera. I'd also like to remind members of the community that those LTFM funds are highly regulated in nature and can only be used for deferred maintenance projects. So things that are existing within our structures that are connected to our buildings, new items such as computers, laptops, servers, furniture cannot be used with LTFM. Neither can new structures such as our countryside elementary addition. So things that are already existing that we can extend the useful life for. The 10-year revenue and expenditure plans are included in your board packet tonight. Again, we'll bring those again next week as well as forward those on to our finance committee for guidance and feedback. If there are any questions, we can take those now.
Do board members have questions or comments?
Just a point of clarification. So when I looked at the revenue numbers, we basically have a flat number for 10 years. That's sort of how I saw that from there. I'm assuming that's just a calculation that you're using. And for the, I think it was the APU number, was that 93, 93, something to that effect? I can't remember the exact number. But from the, from the protocol that I saw in the 10-year forecast, you're basically holding it flat over that period of time just to have as a baseline, even though that the, the actual number might be up and down based off of that. But you're using that flat as part of your projection. Is that correct?
Absolutely. So I can answer that question in two parts. Director Birdman, as far as the average per pupil unit revenue that you referred, we actually generate a possible revenue stream of greater than that figure because we're one of the grandfather districts from the old alt facilities maintenance program that was sunset in, I believe legislative session 2015 and took effect in 2017. So we, we generate a lot more revenue than we actually receive. And you're right, we do keep a flat tax rate, which is a great benefit to our community and taxpayers, but also gives the school board the flexibility and authority to seek voter approval on bonds without necessarily increasing the tax rate for the community. So we're able to stretch those payments out over 30 years or so to maintain the most level of debt service as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Great. Thank you, Director Woodard. Next up for our discussion items, we have our policy review. And we have the chair of our policy committee, Regina Neville, and also our district legal counsel here tonight to talk about a policy. So I'll turn it over to you, Director Neville.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. We have two policies up for discussion this evening. Policy 516.5 on overdose medication, which is a brand-new policy for all school districts this year. And policy 524, an update on our internet acceptable use policy. So I'm happy to welcome Trevor Helmers, who is legal counsel for the school district, to introduce us to policy 516.5 on overdose medication. Welcome.
Thank you, board members. One of the changes, a lot of changes this year for school districts in the last legislative session, one of them, one of the big ones was requirement that a school district maintain a supply of opiate antagonists. Each school building having two doses of nasal naloxone available onsite. And then also saying in that update to policy that you may adopt a model plan for use, storage, and administration of these opiate antagonists. So what you have in front of you is a draft policy on those pieces. This is largely based on the Minnesota School Boards Association model policy. And it really matches kind of what the requirements are in the law. It is, it's important to note too that this section went into effect on July 1. So this is there right now. And so this policy is just kind of catching up with some of those requirements. With that, if anybody has questions, feel free to ask them. But otherwise, you know, this is really, it's done to be in compliance with one of the many new laws that we will be putting in place this year.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I just had a quick question about school resource officers and whether or not it extends to them if they are, if they are part of, extended this coverage. And then if they were the ones to administer it within the, the building, are they covered under this policy?
Yeah. And I, in the actual policy itself, I believe that they would be. Perhaps the chair of the committee might know more closely than me. But for sure, under the, under the laws and under the Good Samaritan laws as well related to this, because we have about six or seven laws that all have to do with essentially if you are acting in good faith in providing the, the naloxone, that you are not liable for, you know, any actions that occur. So they would certainly be covered under that. If they were coming into our building and, you know, taking those actions, we would want them complying with our policies. Typically in our SRO contracts, we do require them to follow our policies. So they should be following these procedures as well if they're in our building.
Dr. Stanley?
Yeah. Under Section 3 Policy Responsibilities B1, within their states or personnel employed by or under contract with, and they are under contract with us, so they would qualify for that.
I know, Karen, you have a question, but I kind of similar, I guess, question to Dan's or along the same lines is, it says for the administration who can administer it. However, I guess I was wondering, in our district right now, are all of our nurses already, do they already have the ability to administer it? And do we have someone, do we have a staff member onsite at all times to administer it? Is my question?
Yeah. So at our schools right now, because it is the school buildings, we, where programming would be in place, we do have someone to administer that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Trevor, for being here tonight. I know in policy committee, we've talked through this policy. And one of the things that was drawn to our attention is that this is in school building during the school day, not field trip, not hockey games, football games, all of that. My question is more in general, probably outside the scope of this policy. But in general, as we're talking about this, if a student would administer this, or let's say something happens, there's an overdose at a football game, are Good Samaritan laws in place to protect them when they're on our property?
Yes. The, the Good Samaritan law that is in place in Minnesota statute 604 applies regardless of where it is. It really just only has that good faith requirement that someone's doing it in good faith. So it would apply to students. It would apply to if a teacher were to do it. It would apply kind of across the board. And I would say that's, that's something a little bit outside of the policy itself. But just from the, from the legal standpoint, yes, they would, they would not be liable for any, you know, any harm that came from the administering that kind of emergency dose.
Thank you for answering that. And I know it was outside the scope of this policy, but I thought as we were talking about this and had you here today, I thought it was worth just asking that general public question. Thank you.
I have a companion question to Karen's, which she touched on. But I just want to clarify that already it is possible for students to have a prescription to have specifically Narcan on their person. And that, this policy doesn't apply to that. That's already legal and allowed. Is there anything else that we should be aware of in relationship to a student having Narcan?
I would say not necessarily. You know, that is the type of thing, though, that we might have an interaction there between this policy and what the law allows and what we might allow in general. Because it is still a, is still on the schedule for drugs. It would probably be the type of thing that in our other policies on student medications, we would require a student to bring in that, that order to show us in order to carry it. So you could absolutely see a situation where, for instance, say last, last school year, a kid was having an overdose. The other student had it on their body, gave it to that student. We say thank you, but also here's your discipline because you can't have that on school grounds. You know, that's, that's not what would happen. But it would kind of show the interaction of those two policies with each other. So that might be something that, you know, kind of in a back-to-school idea, if we're talking to students and families about that, we might share that we still don't want unknown drugs coming into the school. That if you're going to carry, you have to bring in your prescription because this is still, I, I understand that it is going to be over the counter soon, but right now it is still prescription.
Thank you.
Last que, well, last question, I think. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Julie.
The only thing I was going to ask is, can you just clarify that this law went into effect July 1, to confirm that? And can you just speak a little bit of that to the community? And you, Dr. Stanley, too, just how that's rolling out at the schools?
Sure. Yeah. And if you want me to start, yeah, absolutely. It started, was put into effect on July 1. The policy is not required, but is a really good idea. Because if you're going to have it on school property, it's a very good idea to have your policy saying how it's going to be administered and what our expectations are. So you aren't required to get this policy in place, but it's a very good idea. This did go into effect. You know, I think a lot of these laws were put into effect over the summer with them thinking, well, schools are actually going to comply by the time students are back, maybe not realizing that a lot of our school buildings have students in them all summer with different kind of events. So just from a legal side, yes, it's in effect right now, kind of regardless of what you do with this policy.
And thanks a lot for that, Trevor. So legislatively, school, school districts are required for each school building. This is under Section 3A. Each school building must have two doses of nasal naloxone available onsite. And so Director Jody Remsing has been working over the summer. We do have those two doses of naloxone onsite at each one of our school buildings to make certain if there is an overdose. And nurses have been trained as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much for clarifying that.
Quick question, and I think it's great that this is available. Is there any, is there any increased liability to our district or employees since this is available and it is in policy? If, God forbid, something did happen to a student and we have our two authorized personnel, let's say we can't get ahold of one of them or some, like worst-case scenario, does this somehow increase our liability for?
Yep. I know what you're asking. And I think that in the abstract, no. Because the law says we have to have it and that we can have a plan. It does not say we have to give it. So there are no affirmative requirements for us to, to use these. You could see an argument coming down the line on a potential negligence claim saying, why didn't you have more people ready? Why didn't you have more people? But again, the, the, that would really go back to, well, we aren't, we're required to have them, but we aren't required to give them out. So I, from a, from a, is there an increased liability? I'd say you're in the same boat, first of all, as every other school district. And I just don't know that there's really going to be that much of an increase in potential liability.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Trevor. We appreciate it. This policy will come back at our next regular meeting in August for full approval. But as Trevor and Dr. Stanley mentioned, it is current law. And we, the district does have a plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
Our next policy for discussion this evening is 524 Internet Acceptable Use. And I'm happy to welcome Natasha Monseth Daly, our Director of Media and Technology Services, to walk us through the updates. Welcome, Natasha.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, and members of the board. Policy 524 is our internet acceptable use policy. We also, you should know it, have a companion policy, Policy 634, which is electronic technologies acceptable use. This policy is really more formatted, 524 is really more formatted towards students. So keep that in mind as we discuss some of the changes and revisions here. Most of the revisions that were put into this policy at this time were in regards to new legislation that came out over this past about year or so. And so that's really where a lot of the changes and impetus for these came from. And in the policy committee, we had a lot of good discussion about some of those changes and what they meant. Truthfully, I'll just say, our goal in this policy, or my goal in this policy in reviewing it and looking at neighboring districts and looking at what MSB provided for us, was to really stick with that MSB language and guidance. Really until we start to understand the new Minnesota data privacy laws and some of the changes that are coming out in legislation, we felt that that was best to stick with MSBA policies. So what you'll see in the policy is the parts in blue are obviously the parts that we have added ourselves as a district. And then a lot of the parts in red, as Polly put in here, are the parts that were MSBA-specific language. And so we felt that those were necessary to include to, one, provide that definition and guidance and really to just give us a kind of a legal standing point in this policy as we continue to decipher what it means and what it looks like, especially with the way that the technology landscape rapidly changes. So I'm trying to see if there's some, some specific things you'd like me to point out or if you have questions, we can just go right to those.
I would encourage the board to maybe go right to questions that anyone may have. Which may include specific parts of the policy that you'd like us to walk through.
Or maybe there are no questions. That's fine.
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, all right. Sorry. No, that's fine.
I have a question slash concern and/or clarification under five unacceptable uses. A, G, where we add in use of social media for non-academic purposes and/or use of social media by students under the age of 13 is unacceptably, is an unacceptable use. And I guess my question is, what is our district definition of social media? Because I think that it can be a broad list, it can be a narrow list. I think that, I know that my student has used like Moodle to interact with students on assignments, that that can be considered social media. And so I'm a little concerned about that this could be overly restrictive and proscriptive, especially when we say we aren't going to allow students under the age of 13 to use social media at all. Like, I understand the contemporary use and I assume it's like TikTok and Facebook and things like that. However, I was wondering if we could put some more definition around it to make sure we're not prohibiting some ways that teachers creatively use certain applications? Or if we truly mean we don't want students interacting with each other on technology? I guess that's my question.
That was my question as well, because I, I know certain, what you would consider social media platforms that are a part of an expectation for.
So there's a couple of factors to that. One, Moodle or Schoology, those are not considered social media platforms. Those are learning management systems and they have a specific name. So if it would help us to define those things, I think we could do so. Because a Facebook, a TikTok, a Twitter is very different from academic interaction via a learning management system. So if we needed to delineate that, I think we could add that definition. The reason we have the under 13 is because that's part of the Children's Internet Protection Act, which is actually, that's a federal guidance and law. And so that part about students under the age of 13, I would not change under any circumstances. But as I said, we could provide further definition or clarity if that would help. I don't think that there is, I, I'm not concerned that this policy would become more restrictive around social media because of the language that's in here. But if the board feels that way, then we could add that definition in there.
So can I throw out some, like, use cases, like, that were running through my mind? So say we have a student newspaper and somebody's job is to upload information onto Twitter or Instagram or something. So that would just be, under no circumstances can that be done on a school device? Am I understanding that correctly?
No, that's on academic purpose. And so then that could be done, and it's a non-academic purpose. So for students using TikTok to film TikTok videos in the hallway, non-academic purpose, therefore that would be prohibited. But for the use of a classroom or academic, we have some teachers that use Twitter for getting, like, for example, in a social studies class, for students to get information about other countries and so on and so forth, that would be acceptable use, except for students under the age of 13 because they can't even sign up for a Twitter account legally.
Okay. So next, next use case, extracurricular and co-curricular activities.
What's the question?
Use of social media platforms on district devices, say a Discord.
So we, we already have some Discord work set up for those kinds of, Discord workarounds, I'd say, set up for those. We do discourage that because those are not things that we are able to filter and control on our end. And so in terms of extracurriculars, one, this policy is not regarding extracurricular time. And so that's a different conversation probably in question. But I would say that, you know, students using Twitter or Facebook, if it's a district device, we would be saying they wouldn't be using it if they're under the age of 13 or for non-academic purposes. I think you can make the argument that an extracurricular activity is pertaining to school and would be an acceptable use.
So I don't, I'm not disagreeing. I just don't think we spell that out here. I, I just think we have to be so clear with what our intentions are. That's all I'm saying.
So, so I'm clear for policy committee direction. The request is that a more clear definition be added for social media? Is there an and?
And. And use cases.
Use, and what non-academic could mean, right? So if I hear "non-academic," I'm thinking that's anything outside of the school day, right?
So two definitions for social media and non-academic.
Yes.
Yeah. And I would, I would, I think it'd be interesting to ask, like, middle school and high school teachers, all the different, what ways are they utilizing social media at all in, in education, especially with some of our, like, STEAM things that, because we're working on coding and website. And so I'm just wondering, like, at some point, are we going to be asking students, like, embed a Facebook page into, but as an academic thing, but then they're under 13? So I just think it gets.
We would not be allowed to do that in middle school. So in high school, that's a different conversation. We would need to address that. But for middle school students, we've essentially said no social media can be used because that's, we're never going to say half you sixth graders that are 13 can get Twitter, but the other half of you cannot for academic purposes. So we've really put a blanket approach on middle school to not use social media. So what we have done and what Matt Flugum, our digital learning coordinator, is really good at is providing teachers with alternatives to then either share their work, experience. good at, is providing teachers with alternatives to then either share their work, express their work, have those same experiences that don't violate those types of laws and practices.
Can I just add one quick thing, too, that we talked, I know, we talked about this in policy a lot? And that under the age of 13, it really was on top of federal law, but it really was following Twitter, Facebook, all those.
Yeah.
Instagram. Like, so they're the ones dictating it, whether we want to, whether we want to have sixth graders doing that, sending out tweets or not, was out of our control. So I think that's what that was directing that. But I do agree, like, a little bit more clarification, so someone reading that, they really understand that. And I think reading it for teachers and for parents. So it's kind of both and, that's what I hear you're saying. Okay.
I wanted to be, to get clarification on how I read this. So it talks about the internet acceptable use. We obviously have the situation with our district-provided devices. But students can bring their personal devices in and use the internet if they gain access to the Wi-Fi and so on and so forth, but it's also addressing that as well, is it not?
Yes, with caveats, right? So we can, we filter the exact same way, we provide the same firewall for personal or district-provided devices, but if a student is using their personal device at home to shop Amazon, there's nothing we can do about it.
No, no, I meant more that when they're in our building, they're accessing our Wi-Fi, accessing the internet through that connection.
Absolutely.
The same things apply.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this policy? So I have direction back for the policy committee to add definitions for clarifying social media and non-academic. And other than that, we'll bring this back in August. Thank you, Natasha.
All right, thank you.
Those are our only discussion items. We'll now move to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the filing period for affidavits of candidacy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to welcome Director Woodard back up to the podium.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, members of the school board. The filing period for affidavits of candidacy for office is something that's required by state statute. We provide official notice of the filing period in our official school newspaper, as well as certain conspicuous locations around the school building. This is merely a formal way of opening the filing period, which begins on August 1, and will close after 14 days, so 5:00 on August 15. Members who are interested in running for office will file their candidacy downstairs in the main entryway and also provide the district with $2 to file as a filing fee. In addition, at the August regular meeting of the school board, we'll bring a recommended action item and resolution to actually call for the general election to elect three school school board members to terms of, at this point, four years. If there are any questions, I'll take those at this time. If not, the recommended action is before you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, you may.
Where are folks registering? Because I heard you say downstairs, but historically, it's been in the superintendent's office.
No, we've actually received, so Ann goes down to the welcome center, and we've received them there.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Do board members have questions or comments? Great. We will now vote by roll call to approve the filing period for affidavits of candidacy. Allenberg? Aye. Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
The filing period for affidavits of candidacy has been approved. Next are board liaison roles. Thank you, Director Woodard. Do I have a motion to approve the board liaison roles?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second? So this is actually, I know we put board members in their roles earlier. This is actually approving the new configuration of the roles. So I know it's a little bit confusing, so I apologize if that's was confusing to board members or any members of the public. So this is, the board looked at our liaison roles and analyzed them for capacity of the board, equity and access of our stakeholders, and making sure that we were standardizing our communication with both, within the board and with our stakeholders. And this, what we're approving are the recommendations for how we move forward in the 2023, 2024 school year. And I know we've talked about it at the last board meeting and also in a work session, but I want to make sure that no board members have questions before we vote on these changes. No? We'll now vote by roll call to approve the board liaison roles. Allenberg? Aye. Oh, now I have to, Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
The board liaison roles have been approved. Now we're going to go to our policy, and I'll turn it over to Chair of the Policy Committee, Director Neville.
Thank you. We have several policies before us this evening for approval. Each of these have been discussed. Grateful to our admin team, who's put in a significant amount of time to provide the updates for the policies. We can just take these one at a time, see if there are questions. I'll start with Policy 111, Equity and Educational Achievement. And there's, oh, let's see, I have a note, I want to make sure what my note means here. Oh, yes. So the changes that have been made in this policy, since we discussed it, were both recommended by the board at the June 12 discussion. One is a reference to the strategic plan in section 3B. It's been deleted for clarity, so that it's not tied to the strategic plan. And also the reference to work toward the five-year goal. That language has been deleted, again, to make the policy more timeless. Other than that, the language in the policy remains as we saw it at the last meeting. Are there any questions before this one is approved? Okay. And Chair Allenberg, do you want to, should we approve all these at the end afterwards? I'll just walk through them then. Okay, I will keep going. Thank you. Policy 113, Data Requests. There was one change since we saw this on June 12. There was a suggestion that in section 1, Purpose, the word relative is deleted, so that, again, the language is more clear. Other than that, all language remains the same. Are there any questions? Okay, we'll continue forward. Policy 414, Mandated Reporting of Child Neglect or Physical or Sexual Abuse. That this policy and Policy 415, Mandated Reporting of Maltreatment of Vulnerable Adults, have no changes. Are there any questions? Okay, and then Policy 806, Emergency Management. This one, basically, no, there are no changes to this one either, since we saw it last. Any questions? All right. Thank you. And we can move forward for action.
We'll now vote by roll call to approve Policies 111, 113, 414, 415, and 806. Allenberg? Aye. Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
The policies have been approved. That is the end of our action items. We're now going to move to board leadership and committee updates. Anything from board members? I have one. One of the most important things our board does is hire superintendent and perform our annual review. And so at our June board meeting, we did our annual review of Dr. Stanley. So I'd like to read a summary of our review of Dr. Stanley. Dr. Stanley displays many strengths, and the board feels that she has met or exceeded each of her goals for the 2022, 2023 year. Some of her greatest strengths include her ability to set high standards for herself and those she works with while employing great empathy towards individuals. She's able to build authentic and genuine relationships with various stakeholders, and then through consistency and her own insistence on high standards earns the trust of those stakeholders. She embraces collecting and analyzing data to really focus on student achievement and the whole child. Dr. Stanley is an effective leader and leans into empowering others on her cabinet team to develop those leader, their leadership skills. Dr. Stanley and the board continue to grow in their work together. This will be an ongoing effort and includes, but is not limited, to finding ways to incorporate educator voice in our processes and further refining the timeline and process of board superintendent work. I think I speak for the board when I say we're very lucky to have you as our superintendent. So thank you for a great year.
Thank you.
Dr. Stanley, do you have any superintendent updates?
I do have one update, and that is actually regarding the upcoming board seats that will be opening up that Mert talked about and so on. Make sure I have the date and the time right. On Wednesday, July 26, I'll be offering an information session. Board members come, sometimes we have one or two board members there, and it's just general information about if you're, for individuals who may be interested in running. That is from 6:45 to 7:45 on Wednesday, July 26, in room 315. So for anyone in the community who's interested in running for board, I encourage you to come out and learn about that. In addition to that, the board, as part of their goals, worked on a video that provided an overview of the responsibilities of board. And if you're interested, but you can't make it to that session, that video really provides a really strong and factual overview of what the work of the board is. Again, we're really excited to have Principal Paul Patel on at the high school, and we actually have information sessions that Paul will be holding, both for staff and for families. And those are being held and out on the website on the 26th, as well during the day and later in the afternoon. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote by roll call to adjourn the meeting. Allenberg? Aye. Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
The motion has passed, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.